Okay, good evening. Call the order, meeting number fifteen, eighteen fifty of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are located at the Scout Hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a quorum, we have three regular members in the audience, plus we have one regular member via Zoom, and we have one alternate member. Frank, I'm gonna ask you to sit in on tonight's discussion then voting if you would. Thank you. Do we have any added items, Mike?
We do not.
We do not, okay. We have no legal notices, so we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Does anyone have anything they would like to speak on, on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes, we have two minutes to approve. Unfortunately, we do not have enough regular members present that were here on April eleventh to approve that meeting minutes, so we're gonna have to table that to a future meeting. But we can discuss the April twenty fifth minutes, so. Does anyone have any suggestions, edits, alterations to the minutes of April twenty third? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes, number eighteen forty-nine dated Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
There's a motion on the table for approval, is there a second? Second by Stacy, any other further discussions? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Abstain, I was there.
So we have, we have three yeses and two abstains.
Sorry, Mike, could I have the abstentions?
Yes, Jim and Dave abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay, receipt of applications, we have one application to receive. It's PZ twenty twenty-three dash sixteen for ten Prospect Hill Terrace, a site plan modification proposing twenty-four hour drive-up storage units with the, within the existing parking lot and site improvements. The applicant is True Storage Josh Sullivan. This will be heard at a future meeting. We have nothing for performance bonds or actions. But we will we'll move on to our continued public hearing, PZ twenty twenty-three dash two for one eighteen Prospect Hill Road, a special use permit for a site plan review for the proposed trucking terminal, the applicant applicant is Crane Properties LLC.
Good evening, for the record, my name is TJ Barasi, licensed and certified professional engineer for the Crane Properties LLC regarding a special permit for proposed truck terminal, nineteen Prospect Hill Road. I believe the last two remaining items on the site plan from last meeting, there were two items that were still in discussion, one was the right turn geometry on the Prospect Hill Road. And we just discussed lengthy after the last meeting, we're proposing a left turn only sign coming out of Prospect Hill Road. And there was a question about employee parking. And I want to apologize a little bit, I held a bit of a misperception, misunderstanding of how truck terminals actually operate. So to educate myself, I visited a truck terminal, sat down with the manager, and asked him how things actually work. What I learned from there was, there's actually two types of truck terminals. One are local, these are over the red, local terminals, have people come in in the morning with their cars, they get in the trucks, they do their routes, when they get back in your car, they go home. Over the road terminals, not so much, the drivers drive into the truck, drop the trailer off, pick up a new trailer, it'd be on the way, so their their truck is basically their their personal vehicle, piece of wood, you need to know we have them with a road facility or a local facility. Well, not knowing that, had to figure out how to come up with a parking calculation for a truck terminal, because he says it doesn't have that in their regulations. But Dalton Towns that border eighty-four ninety-one, that might have truck terminals conveniently located ninety-four ninety, eighty-four ninety-one. Made a couple contacts, had a discussion with Britain. Britain referred me to East Hartford, so contacted these Hartford regulations, looked through there, they had some parking calculations for a truck terminal. So I took their regulator, parking regulations for truck terminal. The East Windsor warehouse parking requirements, kind of combined the two, came up with something that I thought was reasonable, sent it to the planning department, got them to review it, and they said, yes, this is acceptable. So for this application, our project, the parking card calculation is on the front page. Now at the front page, there's parking requirements for the office, parking requirements for the warehouse area. You go through the calculation, turns out we need eleven required parking spaces, and we're proposing fifty. Those parking spaces are gonna be right along the building on the north side and the west side. There'd be plenty lit with the the photometric, the updated photometric plan indicates that there's plenty of lighting for these parking spaces, and they're easily accessible to the building. Like I said, minus any, these are the really the last two items of the discussion, as far as a site plan pertains. Mr. Heskett, this year, you will follow up this guy about his traffic study.
Yes, I'm ready.
If you have a question, yeah.
For the record, Scott Heskett, traffic engineer office in East Crabbe, Connecticut, one of the outstanding questions from last week was the trip generation rates that the ITE presented for the average trip generation rate for a warehouse development. Yeah, Tom staff was questioning why the average trip generation rate was so low. I did a little bit of research. The trip average trip generation rate presented in ITE is a point one nine based on a thousand square feet, but they also present a regression equation, and a regression equation as it says, it's an equation which has a higher trip generation at lower square footages and and progresses and reduces for larger square footages. The average square footage in the warehouse use in the ITE is four hundred and forty-six thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet. So of all the uses that they have information for the average sizes for forty-eight, which means they've done a lot that are bigger than that, and some that are smaller than that. And but the regress regression equation is all of the average rate is a point one nine. By using the regression equation with the ten thousand square foot facility here, you're looking at trip generation rates of two point two eight and one point three four trips per thousand square feet. So those rates are in line with the previous versions of the of the ITE trip generation manual. And those are the average rates or the rates which we use for for our for our particular analysis. So we do believe that the trip generation, again, we present a trip generation for warehouse and for the truck terminal facility, they were both pretty similar. We believe we've got appropriate rates for this size facility and this type of use. Does any specific questions or any follow-ups related to that, I'll be happy to try to address.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any further questions, Frank, Stacy?
As far as your your parking spaces, you're probably right, because Central Transport and East Windsor, they have probably a couple people in your office, two, three, they have a couple people that help unload the trucks, some of the drivers unload the trucks themselves. And all those guys, and that's a short call operation, they all, the drivers actually park there.
That's the one I visited.
Central Transport, right, in
On Newbury.
On Newbury, yeah.
Sat down with him. And he said, he goes, we're local.
And they're local, so they have maybe ten, eleven parking spots max, so.
Right, they're right along, yeah, that's the one I actually visited.
Yeah, I've been there a few times, so you're probably pretty close to a park, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
So I got that.
Are any of these spaces designated as handicap spaces or?
That is, I mean, we can make them handicap.
I think that's something that you'll have to address with the building department, what their requirements are.
Yeah, give me at least one.
Yeah, it'll have to be at least one, but I know there's a calculation for that, so you have to see the building department on what the actual requirement's gonna be for how many you're gonna have to designate as handicapped. Yeah, I mean, I think, did you have the ability to look over the?
Yes, they all seem reasonable, most of them I believe are general features. And then at the bottom, there was the application specific conditions.
Yeah, so condition sixteen, I think, was, should address this, that, you know, that if for some reason your tenant has, you know, the requirement for more parking spaces, they're gonna have to create them, because they're not gonna be able to park in areas that are not delineated for parking vehicles. And and they'll have to put signage up for the for the left turn only. Does staff have any other comments, questions? Dave, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
I only, I missed some of the enforcement of the left turn only and what protections are the neighbors gonna have if trucks aren't making the left turn only and they're bouncing up over curbs and tearing up lawns and what protections are there?
Well, it's been added as a term in the terms and conditions, so if if it is observed that it's not being followed, they would be in violation of their permit.
Okay, I'm sorry, I hadn't seen that, I was trying to go through everything that was online, so I apologize if I asked a redundant question.
Not a problem. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, is there anyone online that would like to speak on this application? Okay, hearing none. Guess if we have more further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for PZ two zero two three dash two one eighteen Prospect Hill Road, special use permit for a flight plan review for a proposed truck terminal, African Crane Properties LLC.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing, is there a second? Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, the public hearing is closed. Do you missionaries feel comfortable on making a decision on this this evening, or you need more time, that you need anything else, more staff input at all, or?
Good.
Yes. Okay.
I'm concerned about the enforcement of the left turn, but it is what it is.
Okay. And then I'll entertain the motion on this.
I make a motion to approve PZ two zero two three dash two special use permit for a truck terminal at one eighteen Prospect Hill Road, African Crane Properties LLC with the following conditions, one through seventeen on page one, are we deleting, are we striking number eight?
With the deletion of number eight, yes.
With deletion of number eight. And this is on a memo made nice from Mike D'Amato.
Yeah, and just to clarify, do you want me to speak to Frank's comment about seventeen to clarify the language there, or you're absolutely good with how we got to it?
No, sure.
I'm satisfied with the language, I'm just concerned about the enforcement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve on the table, is there a second? Second by Frank. Any further discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye. And all those opposed? Okay, so we have four in favor, one opposed, Dave was opposed. Question asked. We have no new public hearings, no old business. So under new business, we have PZ twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, twenty-eight Abbey Road, the town of East Windsor Community Center, a site plan modification for the construction of a building addition for renovation to the senior center community building.
Good evening, Joe Sauerhoffer Deputy Director of Public Works. I am re-presenting the community center for y'all. Basically, back, we were back here in November, nothing's changed, but the site plan's the same, everything's the same. We're running a water down down Abbey Road, basically doing horseshoe around this area to increase for more programming space and more meeting space, obviously, we lack meeting space, and that's why we're here tonight. So I don't know, you guys want me to go through the whole site plan? What would you like?
In case there's somebody, Stacy wasn't here for the first part also, so you give a rundown through what's involved in this. Yep. Uh, no, that's
That's, yeah, that's the existing, that's the existing conditions, and then, so basically what we're doing here is, we're
I looked through a couple of them. I've had this for
Yeah, yeah, we presented the application last meeting.
Yeah, it was in my
So what we're doing is, we're combining three departments, we're combining social services, senior center and parking wreck, bringing them all down and putting them in one central location here, they're all run by one person, and we need more space, we've outgrown the senior center, fire departments look into more space. And we were supposed to be out of the senior center when, two thousand? Yeah, twenty-two years ago, so that's according to the lease that we had, but obviously, we're still there. So basically, what we want to do is, the the existing, this existing room, we're gonna drop the ceiling down, because we don't, it's not necessarily eat all that space, it's not gonna be a gymnasium, it's gonna be a a meeting room, and it's gonna be a lunch room and a program room on one side. And we're just gonna go right around the whole building, right around the whole outside, and basically add thirty feet the length, and we're gonna put a full basement across the back for storage for all the parks programs, the backpack program, the your Christmas stuff or Santa stuff, the all the giveaways. And then take the scouts and give them a dedicated area, bigger room than they have now down in the back, and they'll have the back entrance to be able to come and go, and have the availability to any of the other rooms to use when they're not being used. We're gonna put a fitness center in, in room for the seniors, and then parking wreck will be on one side and have their own separate entrance off the west side. And then, and then a resource room, some bathrooms, the showers, anticipating we'll use this this building as a shelter, if any emergency or anything come. Came about a new generator to run the whole building, because the generator is located there now, only runs the pump station. So there's a pump station out front. Renovate, renovate the whole front, we're gonna take a wall down, move the kitchen forward, so we can have a continuous hallway that goes all the way around this room. And then, you know, obviously some food storage rooms. Stairs going from the outside, on this, on the east side here, we want for patio, so they can have coffee outside, enjoy the spring weather, while it lasts. I think spring only lasts two weeks now. And that's it for that, we'll be bringing a water main down from roof five all the way down, just past the the east entrance, and we're gonna put a hydrant to supply water for fire department going up Abbey Road. And then we'll have to run the domestic, and we're gonna sprinkle in the whole building, because with the renovations in the side of it, we're gonna put sprinklers throughout the whole building. Parking's not changing, parking lot's not changing, all the handicap spots will still be there, this'll be handicapped accessible in the back. The whole front, basically, well, the whole, there's probably twenty-five spots in front. That'll primarily be the seniors, parking wreck will come in from the back. Parking won't be an issue, we have the lot that goes down on the other side of that pavilion. It's gravel on the other side of this line to parking lot. Lenny did all the site work, Lenny did our site plan for us, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, we girls before.
Yeah, no outside lights, it's all, everything's basically staying the same outside. There will maybe a couple wall packs by the stairways that go down. And I don't think there's any wall packs on the back, so we'll probably put some lighting on the back to be able to use the back entrance. You know, all new HVAC in the building, we're gonna take the old ones out with air filtration system, so it'll be nice, it'll be really nice upgrade here.
Dave, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, well, nobody has any further questions to ask, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve PZ twenty twenty-two dash thirteen site plan modification for construction of addition at town of East Windsor Community Center, twenty-eight Abbey Road. Owner applicant town of East Windsor, this approval is granted subject to performance with reference plan as may be modified by the commission, and this approval shall only cover those proposed activities shown on the reference plans. This approval shall be subject to the following conditions modifications. Reference reference plans, number one, findings, number one, and conditions one through twelve on page one, and this is from a memo from Mike D'Amato dated May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, sorry.
Can I just jump in really quickly, I want to clarify, so this, it's in the, it's in the motion that you just made, but this application is only for the work pertaining to what is depicted on the site plan, it's got, is there's no work proposed beyond the limits, this is not, this application does not include any of that work. It is for the renovations depicted on that site plan only, so there have been other applications, there may be future applications. It's got nothing to do with this, so I don't want to tie anything together, I want to make certain what the commission is and is not reviewing.
Okay, understood, thank you. So we have a motion for approval, do we have a second? Second by Frank. Any further discussions? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next under new business, we have PZ twenty twenty-three dash fifteen the town of East Windsor for a site plan modification for the construction of a playground at twenty-four Reservoir Avenue. It's picking up, okay?
And I just want to bring to your attention that this is for twenty-seven Reservoir Avenue at twenty-four.
I'm sorry, it is written as twenty-seven, I'm sorry if I said twenty-seven, it was twenty-seven, yes.
Hello, I'm Rachel, I'm a landscape architect with BSC Group, we have an office
Could you state your full name for the record?
Rachel Selch, I'm a landscape architect with BSC Group, and we have a classroomary office. I'm here to present the playground at East Windsor Park. BS group was hired by the town to design a new playground area at East Windsor Park. The new playground area will provide the park with an ADA accessible playground for the children's two through twelve. This will be an area, there will be an area provided for the two to five age group and the five to twelve age group. The playground will be ADA accessible and provide four vantageable spaces with eight traditional spaces in the adjacent parking area. There is a sidewalk proposed which connects the existing parking area with pavilion and the new playground area. A seating area is shown on the plan to provide a safe place for families to interact and use the play area. A swing set location is also proposed for the area and would include playing for toddlers and older children. Plans are shown around the perimeter of the playground area to provide reasonable screening of the playground to surrounding butters. In designing the screening, we consulted the zoning regulations that meet the screening criteria required by the town. In section nine hundred point three, site plan application, section F three, recent landscaping and screening, the regulations require that all playground, parking and service areas are reasonably screened at all seasons of the year from the view of adjacent lots and streets, and that the general landscaping of the site is in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood. We also looked at the requirements from other zones to help generate guidelines for screening which we, which we use to create a planting plan, which will reasonably screen the playground and parking area from the surrounding of butters. We use sections street six hundred point one, overall landscape area requirement, six hundred point two landscape bumper requirement, and section eight hundred point twelve landscape plan to develop the guidelines for the screening in this location. These sections each pertain to other use zones and are not applicable to the zone of this parcel, and therefore have not been followed. To clarify, these sections have been used to explain why the screening provided on this plan can be considered reasonable, and they have not been required by the zoning regulations. The highlighted sections, as previously mentioned, ask for one shade tree at least three inch in caliber for fifty, for each fifty feet, dense plantings consisting of evergreen trees no less than six feet in height planted twenty foot and center to center in two staggered rows, and the landscape buffers include fencing or plantings which create a solid visual barrier at least six foot tall within twelve, twenty-four months of planting. We have provided four trees, shade trees at three inch caliber to include some height and visual interest to the proposed buffer. We have provided four different species of evergreen trees, which are typically used as screening plants to provide visual typically used to 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 use as screening plants as a proposed closed buffer. We have also provided a mixture of six to eight foot tall trees and four, these are evergreen trees, and four to six foot evergreen trees, tall evergreen trees to provide a landscape buffer that is a reasonable height when planted, while providing plants that will more easily establish than larger plants. We have also provided the evergreen plants in staggered rows based less than twenty foot on center, which surpasses the guideline as mentioned previously. The final thing I would like to address is how this design relates to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as presented on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two by Beta Group. Though through further analysis, it was determined that the proposed location as design is a, on this plan is a better location for the new playground area than the new playground area proposed by the master plan. The relocation of this new playground area to the area by the existing concessions stand as shown on this plan meets several needs. This proposed location will be safer than the area originally proposed by the master plan and will require families to travel less frequently across the road between East Windsor Park and the community garden dog area, uh dog park and skate park areas. This proposed location is also closer to other areas of similar use and therefore is a more appropriate location to expand the playground facilities at East Windsor Park. There are already two smaller play areas and a new spray pad located in this area, and the proposed work simply explains span on these existing uses. Thank you for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions on my proposal? Frank? Stacy? Jim?
Good.
Dave?
Good. I'm good.
All right. I just have one question. Based on your landscape layout, it looks like the plantings are much are denser toward the north than they are toward the south. Is there a a specific reason? Is that to offer access to the play area or?
Yeah, definitely to add access to the playground area through the the it again, um it appears to be more dense, um it maybe more dense on.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at the spacing between the the sewage tree down the bottom there and and the evergreens where the.
Yeah, and I think that um as I mentioned too, that we're spacing trees less than twenty foot on center too, so.
So it's it's more than the requirement today.
Right.
Okay. Does staff have any questions or comment?
Nothing additional, no.
Okay. I mean, we've seen this proposal before with just the addition of the screening now, that is that?
This is, yeah.
That's the only change to the previous.
Yeah, your application.
Okay. All right. Nobody has any other further questions? I'll entertain a motion on this.
I make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-three dash fifteen for a site plan modification at twenty-seven Reservoir Ave for construction of a playground, applicant slash owner Town of East Windsor. This approval is granted subject to the performance of reference plan as may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions slash modifications. Plan sets entitled Playground East Windsor Park, twenty-seven Reservoir Ave, East Windsor, Connecticut dated April seventeenth twenty twenty-three, prepared by BSC Group, revised April twenty-seventh twenty twenty-three with sheets numbered one through five. And then uh limited property boundary and existing conditions survey entitled East Windsor Park, prepared for the Town of East Windsor, twenty-seven Reservoir Ave, East Windsor, Connecticut map oh eight nine block fifty-six lot, zero two five A zone R dash two, prepared by J R Russo and Associates, dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the following conditions, one through twelve, on page two. And then on a memo from Mike D'Amato dated May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Did I miss anything?
That's good. There's a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Frank. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And I just want to clarify, it was a memo from.
Yeah, I just thought, I'm sorry.
It's not affecting the motion, but I just, the May fourth memo which has that in there, which is supposed to.
Yeah.
Okay, Peg, if you would correct that in the record, that it's a memo from Ruth Ann Calabrese dated May fourth, twenty twenty-three. We have no other business or correspondence. So under business meeting, we have our working draft of proposed text changes to zoning regulation section four oh five, temporary permits and seasonal events.
So the only change I have is based on a a comment from the last meeting where someone, I believe it was Anne, had asked about what about um car washes or fundraisers held at the schools or libraries? So that is, I added it, you'll see under section D, number five. That would be another instance where it's out of zoning jurisdiction. Uh those kind of events would be moved through the school board if if it's something based on school or library. And then someone had commented about possible um fees being waived for.
Nonprofits.
So we don't generally, actually, don't we know anywhere in the regulations have actual fees, yes, we have a schedule of fees that we can make a note there for zoning only. We don't have control over if it's a lock for cancer or something that's gonna be under police because they're rogues. So a lot of the things, I was trying to think of something that maybe zoning would be not. It seems like the most of it is probably held under other jurisdictions, but if something does come through zoning, we could certainly make a note in our within our schedule of fees that are posted um for nonprofit events.
Does anybody have any questions?
So what I could do is if you're okay with this draft as it is now, I'll send a copy of our draft to Frog for comment and let them know we'll be submitting it as a formal application and give them a date where we will notify and open um public hearing as as required, so.
So you need a motion for us to refer it to Frog?
Do they do under business? A motion to, this is a, I mean, the draft, so it's not actually.
Yeah, and because it's been a working draft, it's not like this is a draft dated such or this or that, so.
I just didn't know if you needed anything for for.
I think it's want to make a motion to basically um.
Refer it to Frog.
Oh, yeah, move this forward as in that, it will become an official application.
Okay.
Um so we can, you know, we'll treat it as such, you can.
Make a motion to proceed with important in the application to Frog.
A working draft?
Yeah.
Section four oh five.
So I make a motion section four oh five, the working draft proposed text changes to zoning regulations, section four oh five for temporary liquor permits slash seasonal events. Up to Frog.
We have a motion to refer this to Frog. Do we have a second? Second by Stacy. Any other questions and comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. You may proceed. You have any other items for us to discuss on the agenda? Okay, then I will uh call for a uh motion for adjournment.
I made a motion, I'm adjourned.
Motion by Frank, do we have a second? Second by Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned at seven oh eight.